In here, I'd like to call the regular meeting of February 21st to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist, before we move on to the agenda, I'd just like to report out of closed session, the City Council was briefed on item A, one item of potential litigation. No reportable action was taken and closed session adjourned at 7:08 PM. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. All right. We move to item three, the invocation, and we welcome Pastor Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard, and he will provide the invocation. Hello Pastor.
You realize I was in the Community Festival parade with a single-digit? Single-digit. May we pray. Our Divine Creator, we thank you for this world that you have created. We thank you for this beautiful but overcast day, a little nippy and windy, but indeed, the light that you shine on is every day. We thank you that we're able to live in this community and to enjoy the benefits of all that it has to offer us. It is for this reason that we could come to your presence this evening to ask your blessings upon all we do here this evening. May the City Council and their staff have your wisdom to be with them as they seek to do those things that would make this an even better community. We know not what the future may bring, but would ask, dear Creator, that in all we do, that just so that we make a better generation for those to come, for those, for those who come after us, that we might look back to the future with hope, anticipation, eagerness, and for a positive outlook. For those, for those future generations, may we look back and say, "Good job." Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Please join me as we recite 31 words that reaffirm our loyalty to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and evergreen. That's the scroll. Okay, we move to ceremonial matters, and we are going to have the introduction of the Camellia Festival Royal Court.
Do you?
And we are going to call, I'm going to call Sabrina Macy. Where's Sabrina? Oh, she is already here. What's the heck?
Hello, and good evening.
You can run this meeting. Our Camellia Festival General Chairman, and she is going to introduce the Royal Court. Welcome Sabrina.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank you for inviting me and the Royal Court here tonight. The mission of the Camellia Festival is to promote the desire in every child to participate in affairs of the community, and we want to take the time to thank the city for being our official sponsor. It's through appearances like today's that we're able to promote our local community organizations, and I would like to start by introducing you to our Camellia Festival Royal Court for 2023. First up is going to be our banner carriers, Dia Velazquez, Hiroyoshi Sakamoto. We also have Alyssa Marie Yurida and Lucas Jurick. Next up is going to be Princess Jasmine Lane and Prince Camden Long. Next up is going to be Princess London Deng and Andrew Huerta. And finally, Queen Camden Chavez and King Clifford Chen. These children were selected from a group of nearly 40 Temple City first graders who took part in our annual play day in January. They were judged on how they got along with others and following directions. In addition, each child had a chance to answer questions using a microphone. Part of their royal duties including, includes opening our carnival, leading our Camellia Festival Parade, and making special appearances such as these. Do you have any questions for our children tonight?
No, but could they turn around so we could see their beautiful faces?
Absolutely.
Are we going to take pictures?
We'll take pictures, but anyone who's not. Oh my goodness.
With pretty smiles. You guys have been practicing your smiles and your waves? You know how those say, you get the wave down already, huh? All right.
Okay, you can turn around again, and we have some things for you. Turn around. Can you stand, come on to the back. There you go. Perfect. Hello. I'll give you names. Perfect.
Yes, I was actually, I actually wanted to ask, would you like to explain to the children what your organization does in the community?
Sure. We just invite cute people like you to come to show. We actually help make policy, which means you'll understand rules. So in your classroom, do you have certain rules that you need to follow in your classroom and in your school? How to line up? How to walk into your classroom? Things like that?
Yeah.
Yes. Is that fun?
Yeah, yeah. No.
Well, we do that somewhat similar, so we help make, how do you explain rules to kids?
We make laws, actually.
There you go. So laws, we did laws in your classroom, they would be rules. Your teacher might think it's the law, right? But oh tell her I said it's really just a rule in your classroom.
Only a lawyer would say that.
But we make laws. For example, someone wants to, well, how many of you been to Primrose Park? Any of you? Okay. So when we thought there was a need to build a park, we went and did all this work. The staff does, the people who work for the city go out and do all this work, and then they bring their ideas to the City Council, and then the City Council talks about whether or not that would be good for the community or the city. And then just the mayor decides whether or not they want to do that.
Keep in mind, the mayor changes every year, though.
So for about seven more days, I mean, all the groups. I'm just kidding. So the five of us, including Mr. Yu, who is on the big screen, we discuss this and then we decide together if that's something we want to do. Does that make a little bit of sense to you?
Yes.
And if we don't think it's a good idea, then it would take at least three people on the City Council to say, "That's not such a good idea." Because it takes three people on the City Council to vote yes or no in order for something to pass or not pass. Yes, Clifford, I see you looking at my, ooh, that could be tough. Sometimes it is tough to make difficult decisions, but we all get along really, really well, just like all of you do, most of the time. So we have some certificates of recognition for you, and I'm just going to briefly change the wording a little bit to make it well-sensible because we're really good giant groups. But anyway, we want to present you with certificates to recognize all your efforts. You've been going to lots of functions, meeting lots of people. How many times have you had to put your fancy clothes on?
Like, uh, seven.
Seven.
Three. A hundred.
Yeah, a hundred. That's why it probably seems, it probably seems like a hundred, but, so all of you need to do that. That takes a lot of work and effort, not only from you, but also from your parents, who have to bring you different places. So these are certificates to thank you and recognize you for all that hard work that you've done. So my councilmembers are going to help pass these out, and they're going to take a picture with all of you, all right? Certificate. And we have a goodie bag for you, too. And this, these are presented to you not just from us, but everybody in the community, all the people who live in Temple City and work in Temple City and play in Temple City. So it's a pretty big deal for you to get one of these. It took me a very long time to get one of these. So the first one goes to Dia Velazquez. Congratulations, Dia. Nithil Jurick?
How are you doing? Oh, sorry.
And this time, Nabetta. Wow. How does Hiroyoshi Sakamoto get through kindergarten trying to write that name? That's probably the longest name you have to write in kindergarten, right?
It's short, Hero is his name.
Hero. Love it. Clifford Chen. Camden Chavez. And Jasmine Lane. They are just too darn cute. Okay, so.
Do you want the bags first?
Do you want to give the bags?
Well, they have to hold these up.
Do the certificate later.
Hold them in front of you so Jerry can take a picture. There, you can hold them.
In front of your belly. Do you have?
Hi, everybody. I came, Mayor, since it's all kind of family, can we get the families up there?
Oh, jeez.
Come on, families.
You're going to have a crowd.
There you go.
Are you sure, Jerry?
Oh, yeah.
All right, guys.
Daddy.
Is it? I don't know. The one that you come here and go.
You should have dressed up.
I just go sit there.
I know. We're going to have to sit on the door.
Okay, we're about ready. So you want any space?
If you can't see, Mr. Macy, get in here.
I'm good, I'm good. I just want to make sure it fits you.
But they're just supposed to be good.
Come on, Dad, are you coming in?
Great, thank you.
Okay, oil for a break. Because I think, I think you're not quite done yet.
Wait, you're closing some bags.
You can close your covers though, you can close your certificates. Yes, you are going to take this. It's just going to be, it's going to be just sexy. You can close them happy, but. Okay, oil for. What do we say when we are gifted something?
Thank you.
Oh, you can do better than that, let's try again.
Thank you.
Excellent. Did you guys remember how to walk back out? Okay, so who do we start with? All right.
I want to take this time to thank you again for having us here tonight, and then, and remember that the festival weekend is this coming weekend, the 24th, the 25th, and the 26th. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm a little jealous because I've never had the ability to earn a crown. You know?
Oh, you messed up when you, when you, when you're out of office, we're going to, we were going to give you a crown.
You're going to give me a crown.
Yeah, let's remember that.
That's funny. But anyway, yeah, they're adorable. So much fun to have them, and I, I hope we see them on Saturday, keeping fingers crossed. Okay, where do I put my glasses?
Room got a lot quieter.
Brian, let me get out my glasses, will you go do the next thing? I put my glasses.
I'll be in the room.
How do I survive in that?
I, I could, I could help you out.
They're on my chest.
Sure.
You want me to? Oh, you got it, okay.
Oh, I forgot about the extra pair I left. Okay. All right. We move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda, and I do have one. Helen Shaw, Helen, welcome Helen. See, we get to see you in person.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff. I'm here representing, I'm Helen Romero Shaw, Public Affairs Manager, and I'm representing SoCal Gas. I am your liaison to the City of Temple City, and I know that high gas bills have been top of mind of our customers, your constituents, and so I'm here to just talk briefly about it. Some good news, though, I want to start out with good news, that the prices have dropped quite a bit. They may not be reflected on your bill yet because of the billing cycle, but the cost for the commodity, we buy the natural gas on national and regional markets. We buy the gas on behalf of our residential and business customers. We do not mark up the gas, the rates, we do not make a profit on it, but we are required to pass along whatever we pay for that, for the commodity. And, and the prices are determined by national and regional markets. These markets are primarily in the Rocky Mountain states and then some supplies that come in from Canada. So, another, other good news is that the California Public Utilities Commission has approved the California Climate Credit, that that be deducted from your gas bills. They're doing it, I think you, some customers have already seen that deduction, that discount, and usually they do that later on in the year, they're doing that now because of the historical high bills. There are several ways that our customers can avail themselves of programs, especially income-qualified customers. There are assistance programs, there's forgiveness programs, there's home improvement assistance, and there's level pay plan. Also, SoCal Gas is delaying any collection activities on overdue residential bills until April 1st, and, and we will not disconnect any customer that hasn't been able to pay, and we're waiting until July 1st before we even think about that. We have also delayed any res, business customers that, that haven't been able to keep up with their bills. We're also working with them, and our business customers are asked to call us so we can make business arrangements. SoCal Gas has donated $1 million to the Gas Assistance Fund, and this is a program for income-qualified customers to pay their natural gas bills. And so they can learn more about this program and all the other programs on socalgas.com/assistance. So, there's also ways to save your energy bills, and we, we encourage our customers to lower their thermostat, I know it's kind of hard because it's, it's very cold, but if you can, health permitting, wash clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on the water heater to a setting of 120 degrees. Customers overlook that, and you can actually save quite a bit if you set it to 120 degrees. And limit the use of non-essential natural, natural gas appliances, such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces. And again, customers can go to socalgas/managehigherbills for more information, and I'm not sure if I have, how much time I have left.
About 1:38?
Pardon me?
A minute thirty-five, or?
No.
Oh, is that the O bridge?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then just briefly, you probably are wondering, well, what happened? Why do we have these high bills? One reason is very cold weather on the, in the western states, particularly West, Washington and Oregon, and of course, California. And since when it's been very cold, customers have been using their heaters, and so there's been a higher demand on natural gas. The other is, there's been reduced gas supplies from our suppliers, and again, that's Canada and the Rocky Mountains. And there was a major pipeline that was out of service that comes from Texas that brings in the natural gas in a transmission line, that was out of service, and, but the good news is that's back in service, so that, so we're having more natural gas coming in, and our supplies are, are, are being refilled now. And then low storage gas, low natural gas storage has been very low across the western states, including California. Those are all the factors that we were told by the U.S. Energy Commission, the federal government made a study, and these were all the factors that all came together resulting in high prices. And so that's, that's it. If you have any questions, please let, let me know, but I appreciate your attention.
Sure. And Helen, if you have your cards, you can give it to Brian, and he can, the council can forward any questions that they might have. I just have one that you mentioned, no collections will take place until July the 1st.
Yes.
It is not a forgiveness plan, correct?
There is a forgiveness plan.
So.
You have to qualify for it, that's why I'm hoping that the customers go online, and there's a number of programs, look at, see if you qualify, and then you can apply right there. There's applications. Or the other way of doing it, but there is a little bit of wait, because we've had customer call us, but it, the number is 800-427-2200. That's for the residential customer. The business customer can call 800-427-2000, and they will get other customer representatives.
Okay. And Brian, can we put the link on our website? We'll put that link with those numbers, Helen.
Yes, and if you have any questions, and I do have, we're doing this outreach, but I've been bombarding all the city, especially the city managers, with a lot of my fact sheets. I will continue to keep Brian Cook, you know, apprised of any, any programs or any new information, but we're, you know, I was hoping I could say it's getting warmer, but it seems like it's getting cold, we're going to get cold before it starts getting warmer, and, and so the demand is going to still be high.
All right. Brian, if you could forward anything that you get from Helen to us? Tom?
Helen, you mentioned that the water heater, you should turn your water heaters to 120 degrees. What is it typically at? I don't, I never.
Well, you know, it's usually higher, or you don't pay attention, you know.
Yeah, and then where do you find it? Is it on your water heater?
Uh-huh.
You'll see where it's set.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's a gauge.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so.
Yeah, but if you have any, if you have any questions about it, call the 800 number, and they can give you more information.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Helen.
Well, thank you so much for your attention.
Sure.
I'm glad I was able to come in person, so.
Good to see you, it's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
I know, that's why I'm really making an effort to come in person, because I haven't seen a lot of you in over three years, so.
Come out again when, when our bills are lower.
Oh, yeah, I'll be back. I'll bring mariachis or something.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We move to item seven, our consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the consent calendar, sir.
Any objections? Okay, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Do we have any call-ins?
Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay. Thank you. So that, that's been moved and approved unanimously. We move to item eight, public hearing. Item A, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1069, Series C, Code Amendments of Title IX, Zoning Regulations, Chapter One, Zoning Code, and an amendment of the General Plan Land Use Amendment to clarify mixed use and residential densities. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. This is our normal process we go through in terms of the general plan, and one of the requirements of that is to come back with zoning amendments, or excuse me, with code amendments and any other general plan amendments, usually for corrections or things we've missed over the years, and things that staff has identified or the commission has identified as issues that need to be either clarified, corrected, or expanded upon in the current code. So with that, and I'll, there's another part of the presentation where myself or Mr. Reimers will provide some additional context, but with that, if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gullik.
Thank you.
Hello, Helen.
Good evening, council, members of the audience. The first section I'll go over is codifying an existing practice, so this is Section C of the ordinance. There, in one section of the code, it has clarification on where the distances need to be measured, so we're adding, recommending adding notes into the, to this table here that further clarifies where the buildings are measured from. Next one is improving clarity. So there isn't really any clear definition for a officer retail business. There are uses, various uses that are specified in the zoning code, but this just provides additional clarification to prevent someone from coming in and stating that they're a retail use which may be allowed at a certain location when they're actually functioning more like a office, warehouse, storage, or manufacturing type use. So we would have a limit on the amount of kind of accessory use that a retail business or main business.
of the ordinance. There, in one section of the code, it has clarification on where the distances need to be measured, so we're adding, recommending adding notes into the, to this table here that further clarifies where the buildings are measured from. Next one is improving clarity. So there isn't really any clear definition for a office or retail business. There are uses, various uses that are specified in the zoning code, but this just provides additional clarification to prevent someone from coming in and stating that they're a retail use which may be allowed at a certain location when they're actually functioning more like a office, warehouse, storage, or manufacturing type use. So, we would have a limit on the amount of kind of accessory use that a retail business or main business that would be allowed at a location.
Can we go back to the slide before that? I, I know that this is going to be fairly lengthy, so I thought maybe it, Mayor, it'd be okay if I ask a question as we go through these?
Sure.
So, Adam, so, I see that, so these are the definitions that we're proposing, correct?
Correct.
So, under retail says establishment involving retail sales of new merchandise, would that also include if they were selling used merchandise to general public? Or?
So, yeah, typically in a zoning code, you would handle like a thrift store, for instance, or an antique store in a different way.
Okay.
And in certain zones, you might either prohibit them, or you might require a conditional use permit. So we wanted to play, provide clarity that retail is new merchandise, the thrift stores are handled differently.
Okay, so it's a different section?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so the next section is home occupation, business licenses. There's minimal standards currently. I believe it just limits the size, and you can't modify the structure. This would further expand and provide some clarification on what's allowed, what's allowed, what's not allowed. Specifically prohibiting undesirable uses such as auto repair or bodywork, having firearms or ammunition, massage, personal services, pet grooming, kennels, animal breeding. And then there was one section that was being proposed which would allow for music lessons, which is similar to other surrounding cities. And these are some times or limits that staff had recommended to the planning commission. No more than one student at a time, no more than four hours of instructions per day, no lessons on Sundays or federal holidays, and also no lessons after 9:00 PM.
With, with, with this section, though, there, there is obviously flexibility in terms of what the council would like to do, if they want to do one, two students at a time, or eight or nine hours a day, no lessons on Sunday, or, the only probably areas where we'd suggest going along with these guidelines would be no lessons on either Sundays or federal holidays, and no lessons after 9:00 PM, but providing some-
What are lessons if for a certain hour, though? Do we need to have something there, like, we don't want, because I know that with the, with construction, we have a, we can, they have to start at a certain time. I wonder, we should have something similar for, for this, since it's more, less related to the noise factor, I'm assuming.
You could, you could do that as well. You could set a timeframe in which to, in which to allow the stop rate, but it's, you're not restricted, there's, there's nothing that restricts the hours of, of total operation, or even the, the amount of total students per se.
Is the four hours, I guess comparable to other cities that have similar ordinances, or, I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind the four hours?
It was something, the, the general idea was- The, the general idea was to limit a certain amount of impact, but in, when you're considering a home-based business that's only allowing one or two students, and, and you're limiting, I think the, the bigger factor probably from a community impact standpoint is the amount of hours, not the amount, the timeframe, to no earlier than 7:00, 8:00 AM till 9:00 PM, or something like that. Okay.
So, so are we just, so let me understand what we're doing here, then. We're just kind of getting this, and then we're going to go back and say, well, no, let's change this, let's change that. Am I supposed to be, like, taking notes so we can go back to these things, or?
That's one, that's one area where we can go back and get, I think, because it's been, one question has been brought up to me, so that would be one area that we would go back to if, after the presentation, if there's some other areas that the council would like to go back to and say, no, I, I agree or disagree with this area, or I'd like some modifications in this area, that's absolutely-
If I may-
From a time stand, from a time stance, it might, would it be better to just go through these as we have them before us, and discuss it, rather than having, well, could you go back to this section, and, I mean, I don't know, it's up to you.
I have a question, though. This being a public hearing, shouldn't we follow the order to give the public a chance to speak before we opine on them? And we can ask questions now?
Thank you, councilman, yes. Yes, I would agree with, with councilman you.
Okay, so we have to take copious notes, then?
Yes, sir.
All right, just wanted to know what we were doing here. Adam, could you go back two slides?
Say, there you go.
There was some discussion at the planning commission meeting, staff did, or, planning commission did expand the uses that would be allowed. Initially, staff had recommended just allowing piano lessons, and they, planning commission recommended adding woodwind instrument strings and headphone-based instruments. So prohibited instruments would be brass and percussions. Next section is correcting errors. There currently is not a review process for someone adding hardscaping to their property. Planning staff does review other similar applications, and so staff is recommending to add this section into the zoning clearance requirement. Section four is an inconsistency with the public hearing notice in the public comment period for a minor exception. The recommendation is to change it to be 14 days, which matches the noticing requirements. The next section is Section Five, which is the parking space standards. This came up when an applicant was wanting to redo their parking lot, or redesign their parking lot, and we had noticed that the, the backup distance or the aisle for a 60-degree parking angle, or 60-degree parking spot was larger than a 90-degree. So we've recommended to reduce that down to 24 feet, and the current dimension is 26 The next section also that was discovered was, there was a footnote that was left in the table, but the footnote was accidentally removed from the zoning code, so the recommendation would be adding that back, which would state that one-way aisles would be prohibited for 90-degree parking. The next section would be Section Five, which refers to the backup distance space for garages. It's currently limited to single-family uses. This recommended change would open it up to multifamily or any type of garage parking. Section 14 is regarding fences and walls. This is more of an organizational item. The, currently, there's some fence and wall design standards that are limited to only non-residential areas, and that should be expanded to be all, for all properties in the city. For instance, there's having stucco or split-faced block wall if it's within five feet of front, front property line. You cannot have chain-link fence in the front, or, sorry, new chain-link fence in the front or street-side yards, and also no barbed wire, concertina wire, or wrought iron spikes.
I have a question. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Vincent.
So, after these changes, what happened to residents, let's say they have an existing chain-link or other things, and is there coenforcement, or are they allowed to stay? Would be grandfathered?
So, under the non-conforming section of the zoning code, it says that existing fences don't need to be removed if they're non-conforming, unless the fence is taken down, then the new fence has to be replaced with the correct. So it's basically grandfathered in.
Thank you.
Does it have to be in good repair?
I'd have to go back and look at, that's the public nuisance section of the zoning code. So, yeah, if you have a wooden fence that's falling down, then you're allowed to make a certain amount of repairs to non-conforming structures and still continue the grandfathered structure.
Okay.
If you're replacing a few boards, it would be considered non-conforming. If you're replacing the structure itself that the boards hang on to, then most likely it will lose, loses its non-conforming grandfather clause.
So some of, I've seen some front yard fences that are the chain-link, and one section either has a big giant hole in it. That's, how about that?
Yeah, we, I'd have to double-check the code in that case.
Okay.
Sorry.
I have one more question, Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So, it says all fences and walls have stucco or split face. But what, what about, we often see wrought iron fences mixed with masonry, and we have seen white picket fences. Are those allowed?
So, yeah, great question. So, the way the new code would read is all walls within five feet of a front property line must have a stucco appearance or a split face to complement the building. So in those cases, you would be, you'd be talking about fences, and fences do not need to be stuccoed or split face. So you would be allowed to have vinyl or wrought iron in those cases.
What is split face?
A split face is like a concrete block that has a texture to it.
Is that what you've shown on the photo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's a no-no?
No, you, we're trying to promote people using a split face rather than a precision-cut concrete block.
Again, Ms. Reimers, so fences don't, this, the stucco or split face requirement does not apply to fences, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could also ask a question, and what's the rationale for the five feet, of, within the five feet of the property line?
Yeah. I think the idea is that the, the closer it is to the front property line, we want to make sure that it's a higher quality. If it's set further back from the front property line, then you might have hedges or other landscaping in front of it. An alternative would be to say that all fences in the front, front setback area have to be split face or concrete, or stucco.
So from the, the curb, you can go, you only have to go five feet from the curb to put in a fence?
Not technically. So the curb is typically not the front property line. So if you have a sidewalk, the, that's likely where the front property line is. So anything within five-
And if you don't, then it's 20, how many feet is it?
The front pro, the front setback is 20, 20 feet, 25 feet?
20 feet, but the distance typically where the front property line is, if you don't have a sidewalk, is usually 10 to 12 feet in the city. But it varies on the street. So you're looking at 30 feet back minimum is where the front of the house was.
Do you have a sidewalk?
No sidewalk.
So, so that means for no sidewalks, it would be from the curb?
It's, no, it's still taken from the front property line. It's always taken from the front property line.
Right, but if, if a property didn't have a sidewalk, then your front property line would be?
Likely 10 feet back from the curb.
Oh, you're, you're including the, the right-of-way?
The right-of-way, yes.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. That clarifies it. Okay, the next section, eight, would close a loophole for the easy conversion of a non-living area to living area. The zoning code for the R1 section currently limits accessory structures to 50% the size of a house, which is, if you have a house less than 1,280, you're allowed a 640-square-foot accessory structure on the property. State law does allow for ADUs in the residential areas, minimum 800 square feet. So the situation on the left, the, we're proposing, or the language that's being proposed is trying to prevent someone from having an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and then adding on another 420-square-foot garage. So you're making a 1,220-square-foot structure that's accessory in the rear. The limitation should be really 800 square feet for that accessory structure, so that's why it's-
It would be considered all one structure?
Yes, when it's attached.
So in the two examples on the right, they still can't turn a garage into a living structure, correct?
Correct.
Can they?
They would not be able to.
Okay. It's just easier when you have them connected, it seems like.
Correct.
They try to do that probably more often.
Correct. So that, that also means if you had a situation where the main dwelling was attached to the garage, and was also attached to the accessory structure, that, that would be a no-no either, right? That wouldn't be allowed? For that situation, I believe state law does allow that. Oh, it does allow that? Yeah.
Wait, you get the main dwelling, the garage, and the accessory structure all connected?
Right. Yes. So, so if we took the left diagram and moved the main dwelling up, that would be allowed? Correct.
Interesting.
Trying to understand why, but, okay. Okay, the, the next section, which are Sections Nine and 11 through 13, exterior staircases are currently prohibited in the R2 section, so the recommendation is to expand this to prohibit them in the R1 commercial mixed use and industrial zones.
Can you go back?
Yes.
I'm a little confused on this one. So, modify the code to prohibit exterior staircases in the R1 commercial. Oh, so mixed use is different than R2?
Right. So the mixed-use zones are typically either a commercial-only structure, or it's a structure with residential on the ground floor and commercial, I'm sorry, commercial on the ground floor with residential on the upper floors.
Okay. Now it makes sense to me.
So I have a question. Other than R1, R2, commercial, mixed use and industrial zones, do we have any other type of zones?
No, that's all of them, sir.
So basically, we're just not allowing them?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, what's the rationale behind forbidding exterior staircases? Because if you look at apartments and condominiums, well, condo, individual units, a little different, but it is not unusual for apartments to have exterior staircases, and even exterior balconies as an access. So are we saying that's not allowed under the-
Yes. So we would like to bring back to you with the objective design standards, which apply in the multifamily zones, a conversation about allowing exterior staircases in the R3 zone. So that, that's not being addressed by the change that's in front of you today, but from an aesthetic perspective, we think it would be best not to allow exterior staircase, staircases in the R1 zone and in your commercial, basically your non-residential zones.
So there is another zone, R3?
R3, yes.
And that's the one that Vince is talking about, the condos and apartment buildings?
Yes.
That currently have these, obviously, these outdoor staircases.
Yes, and, and we think there's some good ways of doing that, and that's why we're bringing it back to you with the development and design guidelines, so that, basically, what that amendment will say is if you do have exterior staircases, they need to, the design needs to be integral with the architecture and compatible with the architecture. So if you have a Spanish colonial revival-style building, you'll have staircases that match that style, and they're not going to look completely iron and utilitarian.
So right now, we're not changing that, but at some point in time in the future, we're going to look at it to try to make it a little bit better?
Yes, sir.
And Scott?
Yeah, however, the, the language here says prohibited, so it doesn't allow us to bring back the architectural guidelines. Right now, you, we're banning it outright.
The, the, the code that's before you tonight, sir, will not include the R3 zone. It's just to-
Well, I could see that in a mixed use, that I can have a very architecturally pretty, I mean, for a matter even, I mean, you see a lot of exterior stairs in Spanish design that go up to the second floor. So under this, this provision here, we would not be able to do that.
Yes, sir.
And Scott, this picture looks like it's not visible from the street. So if, if a staircase was to be put in, such as that door, and not visible from the street, would that be allowed?
Not the way the, the code is before you tonight. So one concern, actually, working in a, in another city like Pasadena, where we had a lot of single-family homes converted to multifamily homes in the 1940s, we saw a lot of exterior staircases added to houses, some of them with a permit, and some of them illegally converting structures. And so, so often you'll, or, not often, but from time to time, you might see exterior staircases added on to buildings to- to create a second floor sort of a ADU without a permit. So, and I know there's a concern that's in the community about privacy issues. Having an exterior staircase kind of allows those privacy issues to continue. Putting them inside the structure reduces those privacy concerns.
So, so under, under the proposed change, technically, the exterior staircase at Camellia Square would not be allowed?
Yes. The goal is to enclose those and make them part of the architecture that way, so they look less utilitarian.
Okay, so that, the, the objective is not to outright ban it or prohibit it. The objective is to allow, is to require architectural integration of the exterior staircase into any proposed development?
Yes, and the easiest way of doing that is by putting it within the structure.
Okay. Oh, I see, which means you wouldn't allow the exterior?
Yes, sir.
Do, do existing have to be modified?
No.
One other question. So say, look at this picture here, and say that to the left, there was a balcony there and to the left, there was a staircase to get up to the first door. And there's two doors there, one on the north side, one on the south side of the building. And, and someone wanted to have access from, say this was the back door, to go down. Is that currently allowed?
Yes.
And that's just under regu, in all zones, or just?
Under the old zoning code, we would not have allowed it, because there was a code section under the old zoning code that said all parts of the building need to be internally accessible, and exterior staircases weren't allowed. So in this case, what you're, what you're saying is allowed under the current code, but not under the previous code.
Okay, because it seems that that makes it more safe to be able to have two exits to get out of a building if you wanted to.
That's true. I'm also concerned about the code enforcement side of, of that.
Adam?
Okay, the next section is section six, which is inconsistency with the window signs and the distance setback from a window, what's considered a window sign. We have one section that states five feet and another section that states ten. The recommended change would be to make everything consistent and be ten feet from the window. And the last section is regarding the density for multifamily projects on mixed use properties. This would be a.
I'm sorry, may I? I may, may I go back to the window sign? What's the rationale why we go to ten feet instead of, say, I think the other section, I believe, your staff reports at five feet? Why did you pick ten feet? What's the rationale behind that?
It, it's truly just a judgment call about, you know, what we think is best for the community. So it, it could, it could be five feet or it could be ten feet.
Yeah, because ten feet is quite far away. I mean, if you look at this, this, this sign is probably, you know, five, six feet away, and it's hard, you can hardly read it with the reflection. Ten feet might be kind of far.
And I guess a related question is that, in, in this example on, on the slide, this would be in violation of our current code, right? Because we're limiting it to twenty-five percent of the window area?
That's permanent window sign. So if this was within that distance, then it would be counted towards that. It would be, yeah, it wouldn't be in compliance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I've always wondered what the, I mean, I, I, I get the qualitative reasoning for why there's an area limitation, because you don't want it to be covered with posters or advertising and, and things like that. But, um, I think one observation is if you, if we did this, I could name a number of stores on Las Tunas that would be immediately out of compliance. And, and this actually isn't the first time we ran into this issue. So everyone knows that Hello Kitty dental office, that, that ran into an issue, because the exterior, they had the decals for the Hello Kitties covering the outside. And that exceeded the twenty-five percent that's allowed in, in, in our code. So I, I agree with Councilmember you. I, I think the ten feet doesn't make any sense to me.
Would they be in violation or are they grandfathered in as well? So if they already have a sign that's five feet, do we, do we make them move it five more feet back?
Right, any sign that's already installed would be able to stay. It's already grandfathered in. So it would only apply to new signs, whatever code was adopted by the council.
But if you think about businesses, occasionally, they might change, say, say a photography studio would have like a picture, and they'd suddenly decide to change that picture. And all of a sudden, we can say, oh, technically, you're in violation, because you changed the sign. But I, I just, that's just my observation right now. So I, I just had the same question as Councilmember you about the rationale of the ten feet versus the five feet.
Okay, so the next section is regarding the density for multifamily projects on mixed use properties. So there's, just kind of clarifying that the maximum density for multifamily only projects for these, for mixed use zone properties would be limited to thirty-six units per acre. And mixed use projects with commercial and residential above would be allowed to go up to forty units per acre.
I have a question. So based on this, on the surface, that means multifamily will have, would not be as dense as a, a mixed use project. Is that, is that the intention?
Yes.
Why are we allowing a higher density in the, in the mixed use project?
It, it really goes down to what was the intent of the council in approving the original land use diagram in the general plan. At that time, the general plan called for a floor area ratio of two point oh. And then it also stated that there was a requirement of thirty-six to forty units per acre. And it wasn't clear from the general plan land use diagram what applied to residential and what applied to commercial. It, it appears to us from the record that the intent was that the lower standard would apply to multifamily and the higher standard would apply to a mixed use project, most likely because when you're designing a mixed use project, you have additional costs that would need to be held by the density of that project.
That's correct, but, but, but if you, we look at a mixed use project, we already have, I mean, like the, the, the picture here. You already have either a parking garage, you have commercial, and then you allow even more units above. That means that makes for a rather sizable building. Maybe from economic standpoint, yeah, the high more number of units would do, would, would help the developer financially. But I was just wondering, are we making a, a mixed use project too dense?
This is, I, I would say that it's consistent with the city's previous approvals for the project on the north side of Las Tunas, which, which was approved at forty units per acre.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Adam?
And that concludes my presentation. Recommended to conduct the public hearing, find that the project is exempt from CEQA, and introduce ordinance, schedule the ordinance for a second reading, and also schedule the adoption of the resolution for the amendments to the general plan line of settlement.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. Do we have any callers?
Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, we have no callers.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
I think I heard three areas of some comments from the council. If I could reiterate it, one, it was about the exterior staircase, two is about the signage from five, five to ten feet, and second was the hours of operation and amount of students for the home-based business of musical lessons. So just but, but I mean, it's open, it's open for everything.
Yeah, we haven't gone under last council comments. So do you have one?
I have, I just want to go back, I guess, to some of these areas we, we discussed earlier. One, and I don't know where it is, but it was, oh, I, it was a section that has to do with what type of services or businesses we will allow. I don't know where that is on the.
We'll get back to it.
Maybe you can go back to that one real quick. I think it was after this one. It listed several different.
On the home-based businesses?
Home-based businesses, yeah. So what is, the only question I have on this one is, what is, how do we define personal services? What are the, what are, that seems to be a very broad category.
Actually, that's one thing that's pretty well defined in the code. So we did have a definition for that, and there's a long list of examples. It's generally things like a barber, a beautician. What else, what else is in that list, Adam?
Okay, so it is defined somewhere.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, as long as it is, that's fine.
Sure.
The next one has to do with the music lessons and those types of things. So I, I think there were a few council members on this one, so I don't know if anybody else wants to. Does anybody else want to say anything?
Can you go back, Adam, one? Where Thomas says, problem, minimal standards for home occupation solution prohibit hazardous and undesirable uses. So then these are all the things that you want to prohibit? What, what's under personal services?
That's what I just asked.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay.
What, what was?
These are like hair, haircuts and.
Hair salons, nail salons, barber.
But those are all listed?
Somewhere in the.
Yes, yeah, so it would be a barber and a beauty shop, a diet nutrition center, a locksmith, a mailbox rental, nail and manicure shops, bicycle sales and repair, tailors, shoe repair, tanning salons and travel agents.
You know, because I'm looking at pet grooming. There's two of my neighbors who don't have access to vehicles, have pet groomers come, mobile pet groomers. There's also mobile car detailers. So we want to prohibit those?
No, no, it's not going to do it mobile.
No, it, it, it's not the mobile delivery of the service. It's if someone comes to your house and drops off pets and you're washing them in your own home.
Got it, okay.
You know, the only thing that comes up to mind on this thing as well is I know with COVID, a lot of people were kind of forced into doing these things to preserve their businesses. And I know that especially for personal services, such as cutting hair and things like that, a lot of those people were, were doing them out of their home, both as a caution and then they just lost their, their place. So, so obviously, they would not, no longer be able to do that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Got it, okay.
And I guess while we're on the slide, what's, I guess, what's hazardous and undesirable about cutting hair? Just the, you're afraid the hair is going to get all over like the front yard or?
Well, I think we're, we're trying to limit the uses. One of the guiding principles of the general plan is protecting single-family neighborhoods and keeping them single-family neighborhoods. If, one of the principles of the home-based business ordinance is that it's a business that doesn't bring in customers. So it's office-type uses where customers are not coming to the property. So some of these uses are uses where customers would be coming to the property.
But then couldn't the same argument be made about people going for music lessons?
Yes.
Especially if you allow more than one at a time, you can, you're going to have the same issues that may develop.
That, that's true.
How we separate or how we explain the difference in giving somebody a, a, you know, four-hour music lesson versus somebody coming to someone's garage and getting their hair trimmed. You know, takes twenty minutes, or in my case, ten. So I, I, so can, do you have the list in front of you regarding personal services of how that's defined? And maybe that's what we need to look at, and, because I sense, at least from what I've heard so far, that perhaps some of these so-called personal services aren't really what we would term as hazardous or undesirable uses. And maybe that, maybe we need to look at it.
And some are.
And some are, yeah. There's no question that some are. I mean, that's why it was prohibited, I'm assuming, in the first place. So do we have a list of those?
We, we do, I, I just.
Big list?
No, I, I've read through it once already. I'm just concerned about changing the list of what personal services is, because that's addressed in multiple places throughout the code. My suggestion would be if you want to allow certain types of things, that we would then handle that like the music lesson. So then we would provide exceptions for those certain types of things, other than change the definition. So the list is barber and beauty shops, a diet and nutrition center, a locksmith, mailbox rentals, nail and manicure shops, bicycle sales and repairs, tailors, shoe repair, tanning salons, and travel agents. Another option for the council would be to see how things go with music lessons and see if we've found the right balance in terms of the number of hours and hours of operation. And then we could always come back with another code amendment to expand this to other types of businesses. That would be another option.
Well, hearing that list, I can probably tell you that I know twenty people that are doing that now. And they're not going to be too happy when we tell them.
Doing what, Tom?
Huh?
Yeah.
Doing what?
Doing some of these personal services now.
I, I would agree with you, Councilmember Chavez. I know folks that support a family by being a seamstress in altering, you know, alterations garments or, or, you know, wedding gowns and whatnot. And they, you know, they hardly have people come to their house, but they do that from their house.
Well, I think, I think Vince also, I hate to keep bringing it up, but COVID has changed a lot of ways people do things. And I wouldn't want to cause additional economic harm to people who, in my mind, some of these personal services, I don't really have a problem with, to be honest with you. And I could see the, the point, though, that, yes, I could see neighbors, if, if all of a sudden you have twenty people coming and parking on that street to get your haircut all at one time, that could create a problem. But I don't think that's a problem. So I don't know that we have an answer tonight. Maybe that's a discussion for another day as to how we define personal services, or whether we want to make some exceptions or take some of those things off the list, and maybe add some to the list.
I would suggest that we take some time individually, just look at that list, and then come back with personal services and see if we have similar concerns.
Yeah, because I, I really don't see the difference between a, somebody cutting somebody's hair and somebody giving them a, a music lesson. I don't know what the difference there is.
So if it's the will of the council, we could just take section fifteen subsection I prohibited uses and for now, delete onsite personal services. Take that out for now, and then continue that discussion later this year as we move forward. And, and then that way, instead of holding up the entire ordinance, we're not worrying about personal services at this time, but we'll, we can continue to deal with everything else.
Can, can I ask this real quick question? Is, have we gotten many complaints regarding these so-called personal services? From, and, and do we have a lot of, of enforcement issues right now on those things?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
So, yeah.
I think in the past, we had a couple of people operating kennels.
We've, we've had, we've had concerns from people doing definitely auto repair and auto bodywork. We've, we've had, we've had concerns from people doing definitely auto repair and auto bodywork.
Yeah, these other things, I'm fine with.
Those sites of things, but not the personal services.
I'm good with everything else. I just, I'm just, I just have a little bit of difficulty with this personal services category.
Okay.
And you're right, it's been defined well, but I'm wondering if it's outdated and maybe that needs to be looked up. And I tend to agree with Greg that maybe the best thing would be to take that out of this for now and then take another relook at that at some point in the future. Because we could always add that, or maybe just add some of those individual things that we determined to be undesirable or whatever.
Councilmember Chavez, would you want to take music lessons at the same time as well? Or you want to do it tonight?
I'm not sure why we even have music lessons as a separate category in here. Where did that come from?
Probably noise.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it's a noise issue, but...
So I, I think when we started looking at this list of adding, so the way this code amendment started in this topic was we knew there were uses that should not be allowed specifically in the home-based section.
I agree with you.
Then, then the question came up, well, are there some uses that perhaps should be allowed? And as a group of planners, we were thinking about, you know, going to a friend's house or going to someone's house to learn how to play the piano was kind of, you know, part of how we grew up. So we thought, well, what if we allowed it, but only with certain conditions? And so that's where this, where this came from.
Because under the current code, it's, music lessons are not prohibited, right?
They are.
But they are prohibited?
Anything that creates an increase in vehicular traffic, basically, anything that has a customer come to the property is not prohibited, is not allowed.
Oh, I see. So, so right, so really, what's proposed here would allow it?
Yes, sir.
And there would be a change from currently that would completely not allow it?
Yes.
What about personal fitness? I see a lot of those.
Anything where our customer is coming to the property is not allowed by our home-based business.
But that's not on any of these lists there. Would that be considered a personal service?
That would be a personal service, yeah.
And Mayor, just one, one quick comment. To Councilmember Chavez's point, I get we, we like going back to the general plan that we adopted in 2017. But like Councilmember Chavez said, I think COVID may require us to look at the general plan through a slightly different lens now. And that's why I concur. I think personal services and other things is worth taking another look at.
So I think doing what Greg suggested is probably in our best interest then.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
We have that note?
Yeah.
Oh, may I suggest taking the piano lessons at the same time as well to give us time to rethink about it?
Yeah, I think piano lessons kind of comes into the same category.
Yeah, yeah. For example, you know, when my kids were learning piano, it was two brothers. So, you know, at the same time, because they were, you know, similar in age.
If I understood, I think this, right, what is being proposed would actually allow it, right? So if we then do anything tonight, piano lessons would stay on the prohibited list. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we take no action, we're actually, status quo is not allowing piano lessons.
A, one suggestion on music lessons, I've sort of heard a little bit of the talk. You may want it to say if there is not more than one unrelated student present. I just heard Councilman Yu say that there were siblings going. So if siblings go, that's in general, one car going, dropping the siblings, coming back. As opposed to multiple students unrelated, which is then multiple cars in and out of the neighborhood. It's an option for you that I just throw out there for you to think about.
Well, maybe this would be a good time to take, why don't we go to the next slide and see? Talk about, I don't have any problem with talking about the music lessons right now and get that over with, if we want. I mean, that, you know, so, so we're, we're asking to be modified, we're asking, you're asking us to modify the code to allow music lessons?
Yes, sir.
With some conditions?
Yes, sir.
So I guess that's the next subject, and what conditions should those be?
I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, I, I think, I'll speak on this one. I think the four hours is too restrictive. I think if you consider, again, COVID and a lot of people doing business at home, typically, you're looking at an eight to 10-hour day. I mean, how, how many hours do we allow for construction activity?
I think that's seven to seven. See, I think, I think it should be tied into the time for the lessons. So like if we say you can do lessons, or somehow related to that, we say lessons can start no sooner than, but cannot go past a certain hour, whatever that may be. Within that timeframe, and I agree with William, that four hours seems, four hours per day seems a little restrictive. You know, should it be six or eight? I don't know. I mean, I suppose if I, if you're living next door and you're listening to the pounding of the keypad, that might get a little monotonous, but...
If I could suggest just the hours would be, and not have, not have a limitation on the amount of hours, but just say the timeframe?
Yeah, because I mean, to be consistent with our logic with other noise-related issues, it's, I mean, because if I look at this, then...
I mean, if a person is given a lesson, they're not going to go for 12 hours straight.
Yeah, because, because we're already, we're already eliminating the loud instruments, right? That's, that's what's being proposed.
What's the next?
The percussion and the brass. I could understand that, but for...
And did, do we require business licenses?
Yes.
For them to do this?
I mean, I would say based on the construction, seven to seven, and plus what we have here, it's, you operate between the hours of seven to nine.
I don't think I'd want to hear piano at seven in the morning.
But realistically, yeah, because realistically, no one's going to have lessons from seven to nine.
It's hard not.
You're giving, I think you're allowing people the flexibility of a schedule. I mean, if they're busy from seven to nine, that's, that's a pretty darn good teacher.
I mean, I've always been of the mindset, although we've had this discussion before on the construction hours, that seven o'clock is too early. I don't, especially if you have somebody building a house next door to you, and they're there at 6:45 setting up, and they start pounding at seven. Some people sleep in past that. But I, I think, I think it would be reasonable that most of these people who are getting music lessons probably aren't going to start before eight, I would imagine. And then how late do we want to let them go? I think nine o'clock's a little bit extensive. I would, I would be more comfortable with seven or eight o'clock at night as the, as the cutoff. That way, some people who work the next day or have to get up early the next day can know that they can go to sleep.
Well, I think what you mentioned, eight to eight, I mean, I think that's a reasonable start.
Yeah, I have no problem with eight to eight.
Because the thing is, we, right now, the problem is we have no basis for, I mean, like actual data or complaints or like a data set that we can work off of and say, oh...
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, so I think a reasonable start is what you've suggested. I would be okay with that.
How does that piano student coming to someone's house, I mean, I know it's a whole different thing, differ from someone dropping off one dog at someone's house to groom?
Well, that's the argument that I think has been made tonight, is we need to take a look at these so-called personal services and are they really something that we really want to prohibit or not? Or again, do what we did with this, allow it, but with conditions, right? Because that stat has come up with the fact that, okay, we're going to allow music lessons, but we do want to put some conditions. Well, some of these other personal services, we can do the same thing with, but we're not doing that tonight, I don't think.
So we're going to take, so maybe we move on from section, series C, section 15, since that's the one we're thinking we want to, right, Greg, you said, look into more depth?
No, this is a different section, I think, isn't it?
This is also part of 15. I've made changes to it so that we can keep this going, so that we don't have to, if you're happy with music lessons, we can get rid of the no more than four hours of lessons per day. And then the end of it would say, and lessons do not occur on Sundays, federal holidays, and after 8:00 at 8:00 PM or before 8:00 AM. And then up to you all is whether to allow more than one student at a time. But that would be the last issue with this for now. And then we can, as the mayor said, move on and come back to the prohibited uses and deal with that in more depth later.
Because we keep tying it back to the personal uses and to compare them.
I'm okay with making a decision on carving out the music lessons tonight.
Yeah, because I think the key difference is the, the other portion is about what we're going to prohibit, whereas this is, we're saying we're going to allow this. Right now, as it currently stands with no action, music lessons are completely prohibited. Yeah. So I, I would just say, maybe I like Mr. Murphy's idea earlier about the, what did you say, the related students?
The not more than one unrelated student, which would allow, again, for, at any given time, a number of siblings to be dropped and then picked up or, you know, have the parent wait in the car out front. But whatever the case, we're talking about one automobile at a time, which seems to be consistent with what Mr. Reamer said is the purpose of limiting vehicle traffic.
Okay. So I think we're all on board with music lessons, right? And we have Vince.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I like that suggestion.
You said yes?
He said yes.
How about you, Renato? Are you okay with music lessons, as we said?
Has that really been an issue?
What's that? I'm sorry.
We haven't gotten complaints, but...
Okay.
Okay. So I think we're okay with this one.
Okay. And we'll hammer this out.
Were we clear enough on that?
Yes, absolutely, Crystal.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go next to the types of instrument? There you go. So, so then for what we've just done, woodwinds and strings are included in that?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
But, so how is a brass instrument differed from a saxophone?
A brass instrument is a saxophone. A saxophone is a brass instrument.
So, but I see saxophone in the woodwinds that's allowed.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, you have brass.
You have a saxophone, it looks like a saxophone to me.
You're right.
And it's listed saxophone.
Yeah, oh, that's interesting.
Okay, but then, no brass instruments. I didn't know what, is there a difference there? Because I would think a saxophone would make just as much noise as a trumpet or horn.
I thought a saxophone was a brass instrument. It's made of brass.
So that should be, saxophone should be on the right-hand side.
But I'm not a music major, so...
And then clarinets are pretty loud. Piccolos can be a little bit annoying.
Clarinets are softer.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, don't the headphones take care of the sax issue?
What headphones are you talking about?
So headphones, if you, if you use a headphone device for a woodwind or brass instrument, that would be allowed?
Like it shows on the trumpet?
Yeah, so there's some like drum sets or brass instruments where they can use the headphones to reduce the noise.
Couldn't you use these headphones for pretty much every one of these brass instruments?
Not sure.
I mean, they all have a place where you blow into and a place where the air comes out.
I think the overall purpose, the overall idea is the louder extensively sounding, acoustically penetrating noises are the ones that, you know, you don't hear a trumpet player going off with a lesson.
Couldn't you just make a general statement of no brass instruments unless they're used with headphones?
That's, sure.
Wouldn't that cover it?
That would help. We'll read that into the record.
I like that.
That was lawyerly, don't you think?
Yeah, I like it. Good job.
How about defining it by the noise level? If noise is the issue, why don't we look into the way we did our noise ordinance? Define a certain decibel level at the property line?
It's, it's very difficult from an enforcement perspective to, to regulate by decibel level.
That's what we have in the code right now, what noise ordinance.
In some cases, it's the only way to go. In this case, we were hoping there would be an easier way to regulate this issue.
Why is there a photo of these, I guess they're, they're related to the percussions over on the right-hand side?
The sound.
Is that a sound, so is that, is that prohibited, something like that?
No, that would be allowed.
This would be allowed?
Yes.
Any headphone-based musical instruments are allowed.
So the...
They're like pads.
So these pads with the cymbals, that's headphone-based?
Yes, sir.
Where, where, where does the headphone in the thing go?
Well, there's no one there to model it.
I know, but I mean, where would, where would it modify the sound?
It's muffled.
At the end of the instrument.
Yeah, but you got, you got five pads here, and it looks like cymbals, four different cymbals. Where do you put the muffler?
The pad, I know this because my son played it before. They, they're actually, when you, when the drumstick hits the drum...
Makes no noise.
Well, it makes a very small muffled noise, but it doesn't make a drum-like noise.
So those we're going to allow?
Again, I think getting back to Councilmember Viscara's suggestion, yeah, the, not, not to go into every single instrument, but say the ones that allow are phone-based, excuse me, headphone-based instruments that, that something dampen that noise.
But the typical drum set, you can't do that with, I guess, right?
Not a typical one, no.
And I could see where drums could be a little bit annoying.
So we would, we would offer the following as perhaps the new language. Music lessons including piano, woodwind, string, and headphone-based horn and percussion musical instruments are permitted.
I'm okay with that.
And the reason I say horn for Councilmember Viscara is because a saxophone is a horn, even though it's a woodwind, and that way, we're lumping it in. Technically, it's a woodwind, it's metal, and it's a horn, so we're going to, by that language, try and push it over. We'll see how it goes, and certainly, this is something that can be changed in the future if need be.
Learned something new tonight.
But Greg, we, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, but you, we could have a neighbor, have a kid play the drums for five hours in their house with no lessons and be horrible, right? Or play the trumpet, or the tuba, or the...
And, and, and the difference there is, that's one kid at a house as opposed to a succession of people coming in with a business.
Coming and going.
Yes.
Or a high school teenager's rock and roll band.
Don't they hide in garages still, if they do that, when I was a kid?
I don't know if they still do. One of my best friends in middle school and high school was, and I, I, I can still hear every drumbeat of U2's "Sunday Bloody Sunday" in my head because of the number of times I went to his house, and he just kept playing it over and over again.
Van Halen, that's how they started?
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, going back to the example that Mayor Sternquist brought up, if somebody's beating on a drum in their house for 10 hours, there are remedies already in the code for that?
I would imagine so. I haven't had to deal with that issue since I've been here.
Probably under our noise ordinance or something of that sort.
Likely, yes, likely.
Yeah, so it's probably already covered.
Would that suggestion be okay with the council?
I'm okay.
Vince?
I'm good, thanks.
Vincent, I don't see your picture. Just jump in whenever you want to talk.
No, I am good, I'm good on this. Yeah, I was actually, was going to suggest only pianos, and, but I'm good with the amendment.
Okay. Adam?
So the other item that there was...
Exterior staircase, I think, was giving some people heartburn. And the window signs.
Don't need to do that one.
So you want to go to the staircase slide?
Yeah, if I could, if you can talk about exterior staircase?
Yes.
Yeah, I really have trouble with this one. Actually, I really don't understand why exterior staircases are prohibited in altitude to begin with. Because staircases could be architecturally very, very pleasing and exciting. I like to see the lang, before we prohibit it, I certainly want to see, would like to see the language that Mr. Reamer you were referring to, how it's integrated with the building and all. But in, but integration, in my mind, is not necessarily making the interior. You can look at a lot of Spanish-style architecture or Italian architecture with the exterior staircase. the exterior staircases, or the example that, uh, Councilmember Mann had brought up, uh, I mean, certain grand stair, I mean, look at our Capitol, for example, you have grand stair on the outside. Certainly, you don't mean that. You mean something, uh, maybe more like the pictured has depicted. So I certainly would like to see your language, uh, what you're proposing before we, uh, um, put a ban on it.
And Vince, I kind of tend to agree with you. I, I don't know if I'm more, I don't think I'm in favor of just outright prohibiting. I would like to see us do more like, look at the architectural, maybe, elements of what somebody wants to do in that regard, rather than just say you can't do it at all. Because I agree that, I think in some instances, some of these architectures, some of these, um, exterior staircases can be, can look good, be safe, and be part of the building, and add to the, I don't know, the, the look of the building perhaps, or whatever.
I don't think that's...
So I would rather look at it from that aspect, rather than just prohibit them entirely.
Yeah, I, I would concur. I would be more comfortable looking at what we're trying to allow than simply jumping to the prohibition outright.
Yeah. Perhaps we can, uh, this is one area we can come back to.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna let Mr., hearing a consensus of the council.
So, so that would be sections nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Uh, we would be striking that from the ordinance.
Okay, it's been read into the record. So, we're good, we're good. We're just trying to preserve what we have as moving forward with the ordinance and what we're removing or modifying.
So the other one was fifteen...
Although, can we come back at some future point?
Absolutely. No, 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 absolutely. We'll come back to some, at some future point with those, with, uh, another code amendment, and having that full discussion with, with the council on those issues. I'm sorry, Mayor, you, you were asking about...
Well, so nine, eleven, thirteen, we're coming back.
We're, actually, we're just striking for now.
Okay, just striking.
We'll, we'll strike for now and return with it as sort of a focus on exterior staircases and design in general, rather than include them in this series amendment.
And then the other one we heard, uh, as part of the discussion, was, uh, sorry, I'm, I just lost it.
Window signs.
Thank you, Mr. Reimers. Um, section, section six.
Yeah. In, in this one, I, I would propose we stay with the five feet instead of expanding it to the 10 feet, because I personally do not see any advantage in doing that. Um, I understand the, the, you don't want the window to be too cluttered and people, um, trying to, uh, uh, skirt the law, the sign laws by putting signs, but I think five feet is plenty, uh, far away, and not getting into the, uh, argument of, well, some, something perhaps could be interior decoration, interior sign, and that now we're counting as an exterior sign, window sign. So, uh, my suggestion is to keep the five feet instead of 10.
Yeah, I, I, when I saw this, I'm thinking to myself, 10 feet away from a window, I'm not sure how well you can even see that sign, read it, or, I, I wasn't sure what the advantage of 10 feet over five feet necessarily was. But, um, yeah, I, I just, I, I don't see, I don't see five feet as unreasonable either.
I don't either, Fernando.
Unless there's some other compelling reason to have it further than five feet. I, Scott, do you, I mean, I, I know what question came up before when we were going through this, is what's the rationale behind that? And I think you mentioned a couple of things.
It's completely, um, a judgment call. Uh, two reasonable people could come down on different sides of this issue. Um, it, so one of the ways people try to get away from the window sign ordinance is by placing a sign not on the window, but behind the window. So then the question comes, how far behind the window is the sign no longer, should the sign no longer be, um, regulated by the city? Should it be five feet, or should it be 10 feet? I, I think 10 feet, if it's 10 feet from the window, clearly, the sign is not meant for people outside the business. Um, it, it's not usable at that point. If it's five feet from the window, hmm, someone might be able to make an argument that it's still acting as a sign.
And the question is, is it counted towards the total window area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a simplistic question. Why is that a problem?
Why is window signage a problem?
Yeah, like that.
Well, uh, in, in general, cities regulate window signage because they're trying to keep the, the, uh, an area from being too cluttered with sign clutter.
Or you can't see into the business.
See, I think what's throwing us off is in the example you have, you just have one big sign. But I think the problem that you're bringing up is people may tend to put a bunch of different signs, so then it becomes cluttered and defeats the whole purpose, and that's how they get around the window area thing, is by having multiple signs up there. Because see, I don't think, to me, this, what this, what you have here doesn't look bad to me. I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, we, we should have found a really horrible example.
Yeah, you should have, because it would have been more compelling.
No, and, and what you'll see a lot of times, to Councilman Chavez's point, is a, a mini-mart, a chain mini-mart, I can think of one near our house, that has its, um, lottery signage, that has two or three other items in the windows, and then has some end caps that are basically signage selling the product on the end cap, and they're five feet in.
So it's cluttered.
And it's cluttered. And it looks like more signage in the window than there actually is, because it's close enough that everything you're seeing is signage. So that's what they're trying to fix. And, and I do get the point. I don't think anybody has a problem with Snoopy here, uh, in front of the sign.
And, and I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad Councilmember Viscara and Chavez are bringing this up. I, I personally have, I shouldn't say personally, I, I've always had this opinion that the 25%... Yeah, it's not what we're discussing tonight, but it's related. I think 25%, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reimers, is the limit, limit that we have on the amount of signage you can have on the window.
Yes.
If you exceed 25% area, you're technically in violation of the code. So that's why earlier I said, well, this example, they would be in violation, even though it looks good. So I, I, I feel like we're arbitrarily assigning a number to something by assuming that signs greater than that area would not be aesthetically pleasing or po, contribute positively to the business environment, which I think it's restrictive, in my opinion. We, and I could state several examples where this has come to play. I already mentioned the Hello Kitty dental office. There's the piano store on the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Las Tunas. Um, and to me, it just seems silly that we would spend code enforcement time trying to get businesses to do that when there's a host of other things that we, as a council, have talked about that are, that are bigger issues than, than, than just signage. So, so that's, that's sort of, I, I felt like I needed to say that. But for, in what's before us today, yeah, I think five feet makes a lot more sense than, than 10 feet. I, I would argue if there is any room for the discussion on changing the, the percentage on the signs, um, whether it's a future update, I, I would like to see that being brought back.
I, I think, sir, that would have to be a future update because it, um, the planning commission didn't consider that at all. So if the council wanted that considered, it would have to go back to commission, then come back to you. So, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see it as greatly urgent, but it's just, I think, I've seen enough examples come up over the last couple of years where I feel like at some next overhaul or update of, of, of these types of issues, we may want to revisit it.
And, and, and is there, is there any room for compromise in this? Like, I know we just, as, as, as Mayor Pro Tem Mann indicated, we're, we're kind of just picking a number, but we have five and 10. Does it, does it make any sense to say eight feet or seven feet? I mean, I don't, I don't know if, if that would solve staff's issues and then our concerns at the same time. I don't know.
I, I think Vince wanted to say something.
Go ahead, Vince.
Yeah, Councilmember Chavez, I think, uh, the staff report that five feet would stay to somewhere else. And what they're trying to pick up, pick a number that makes it consistent. And that's why I said, uh, go, stay with five, because it was already mentioned somewhere else in the code.
Right, no, I understand that, that it was five, it was five feet, and, and there's an inconsistency in the code that we're trying to clean up. Um, so, so were the two, the two inconsistencies, one says 10, one says five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so I think it's easier to kind of acknowledge and rectify what staff is flagging as an inconsistency. Let's resolve that issue. And like to Mr. Murphy's point, there's other things we can consider in the future. I would agree that that's, this is, I, I probably said too much already, but I just want, I figured it's directly related to this, so it's like, hey, let's, I mean, I, I just want to get that out there.
So are we changing it or not?
You can change it back to five, it's fine. Yeah. I think that's what we agreed.
I'm good with five. Vincent, you said five, correct?
Yeah, I'm good with five.
William, five?
I'm good, I'm good with five.
Well, I, I, to me, I've never noticed a problem, and I don't know that it is one. If it does become one, then, like anything else, we can address it. I'm, I'm okay with five.
And I, and I've heard the comments tonight as to the percentage of sign, window frames. We, we will discuss that with staff, and we will bring that back forward as well. As that, again, not discussed, but we, I've heard the direction. I've heard, I've heard the comments, excuse me, not direction. Thank you. Uh, that's all I had in terms of, but I mean, that doesn't, I mean, your discussion, but that's, if I was to summarize any...
Yeah, yeah. Well, I actually asked a question regarding the zoning density, but having, having thought of it a little bit more, I think the explanation Mr. Reimer gave, I think, I, I, I think I'm okay with that.
Any, like, Councilmember Yu, any other questions on that?
No, 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 it's just that, um, we, you know, mixed-use projects are really treated differently, so in my mind, it's quite okay to have a higher density.
Okay. Other, other than that, sorry, I didn't hear any other comments thus far.
Yeah, I'd, right. That's all the questions I have.
So Adam, is there more?
I think those were all the areas that we heard council questions from.
Mayor, so Mayor Sternquist, I guess if there's no other, we've, we've, we've taken everything just, just for process, from a process standpoint, we've taken everything that you've said, read it into the record, and I'll let Mr. Murphy.
So how would that motion read?
So the motion would be to, uh, read ordinance number 23-1069, uh, or introduce ordinance that, number 23-1069 for first reading, uh, with the changes to section six and section 15 as read on the record, with the deletions of section nine, 11, 12, and 13 as read into the record, uh, waive, uh, full reading and, uh, read by title only, and to set second reading, uh, of the ordinance and adoption of the resolution for the first meeting in March.
So can one of us second that, or does Tom need to read that from the beginning?
Don't move.
Councilman Yu just made the motion, so somebody can second now.
I'll second.
Any objections? Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Do you need to do anything? Okay.
May I read the title?
Yep.
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-1069, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City, California, amending Title IX zoning regulations, Chapter One, zoning code of the Temple City Municipal Senate.
All right. That was number eight. We move to item nine, unfinished business nun, new business nun. Update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Um, I will be briefed tonight. Um, one item that was on the consent calendar was actually something I could kind of celebrate, it was the end of the local emergency, um, for the COVID-19, which is coinciding with the state's. I just want to thank the council and the staff. Uh, the last two and a half years have been extremely tough, uh, going through a lot. Um, and so thank you for all of your support. Thank you for the staff's support through this entire process of getting through a pandemic together and still providing services to the community. Our, um, uh, Camellia Festival, uh, the Camellia Festival group just met a little bit ago. Uh, they are, they've reported us on hour by hour, they're gonna kind of reflect and see how bad the storm that is coming will impact, um, the, um, the festival operations, including the parade. So I will to, they will provide me with updates, and I will provide you with updates as, 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 as soon as we know. Um, the Trellis is now open. We targeted, we opened, did a little pre-opening for the Lunar New Year Festival, but now everything is done. So, uh, the Trellis will be open for the Camellia Festival as well. Uh, thank you to our contractor, and thank you to TransTech as well for, um, their, all their work. One other item, I just want to note on the consent calendar item, is that our audit, again, is a little later than usual. You did see the MTA audit, which is all of our subvention funds we get for transportation-related, uh, uh, funding and for projects. There was no findings there. Um, there's been some significant changes on some of the what's called GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board, uh, rulings that changed some of the way that we have to treat, uh, leases and other, other financial instruments that we use in order to operate. We lease, for example, our vehicles and some of our other operations, so that's created a little bit of delay in time of our audit, but that should be done by the end of this, uh, by the end of this week, actually. So, um, and with that, uh, that's it for me, Mayor Sternquist. Thank you.
Thank you. Update from our city attorney, Greg?
Uh, nothing new tonight, just hopeful that the Camellia Festival goes forward.
Thank you. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Did we have any?
I don't have any report, but I do have a question. Where, where are we at on the artwork for the Primrose Park? I mean, we, I haven't heard anything on that for a while.
Um, Mr. Matsumoto, um, even though he's gonna be on a, a partial maternity leave, will be getting back to the standing committee, excuse me, to the ad hoc, and, uh, and Mrs., Mr. Hepler and Ms. Kealan as well.
So maybe next meeting we'll have an update?
Uh, probably next meeting after that.
Okay.
Okay. And William F., we haven't met. Maybe we form a time and do that?
Yeah, I think we, we should.
Okay. All right.
For, for the item F., the future development of city properties. Oh, yes.
Okay. Um, item 14, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
Well, I don't know. It seems like, uh, we've been praying for rain so much lately that, uh, we're getting our prayers answered, and here we don't want rain, uh, this weekend. So I don't know, maybe we can reverse those. But, uh, it would be nice, uh, if we got a little bit of sunshine this weekend, and hopefully we'll keep our fingers crossed and, uh, we'll get that in. So, other than that, that's it. Everybody have a great week.
Councilmember Viscara?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yu?
I'm just glad to be back.
You look fantastic.
You look good, Vince.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're not sure if that's real you or not, but, uh...
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, likewise, I'm hoping the Camellia Festival and the parade moves forward, so, um, no one, no one wants to miss that. Uh, I do want to also just mention, I, I believe we have our law enforcement meeting tomorrow morning? That, that's still on, right?
Eight o'clock?
Thank you for the reminder, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, tomorrow morning, 7:00 AM, law enforcement meeting.
Nice try.
Breakfast is provided for those who are brave souls.
That's why we're getting a look from Deputy Bowie over there. He says, like, hurry up, I gotta be back here at seven.
I tried eight o'clock, but that didn't seem to go over right now.
Yeah, it didn't go, huh? Seven thirty.
And breakfast.
And, uh, also, um...
Oh, okay.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
And I'd like to welcome, or welcome, invite all the community to the State of the City address will be held on February 28th at 6:00 PM. And there's a few surprises.
At the Historical Society.
At the Historical Society. So it's the first one, I guess, in, what, almost three years?
Live.
Live. So we have some surprises. Come on out and listen to, it's our 100th year anniversary of the founding of Temple City, not of us being a charter city. So in light of that, we're gonna have some fun celebrations. So, and the Historical Society will be open after the State of the City for about 45 minutes, so that you can come out and take a look and, and have a tour of the Historical Society also that's been newly renovated. So we're looking forward to that, and thank you, Brian and Eliana, for working with me on the changes and the additions. And so I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, I don't have anything, and so we are going to have additional public comments. Anyone? Jerry, Steve, none? Close that public comment, and we are adjourned.